All right, welcome ladies and gentlemen. I called to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting this January 8th, 2015. I'll ask our county administrator, Mr. Crepp, to take the roll.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Happy New Year. We are joined this morning by Stephen Madcor, County Council, and Mary Rathke, our clerk to the board. I'll start with the roll. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. We're all here, and would everybody please rise and, as we do, the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance, hear the flag, honor the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a special presentation today, so I'd like to introduce Sheriff Roberts, who will speak about Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Sheriff Roberts?
Well, good morning, Commissioners, and I first want to just start off by saying thank you very much for taking this time today to take a moment and recognize National Law Enforcement Day, and particularly recognizing just an amazing individual and his amazing wife. And seated to my left is Tammy Coats, and off to her left is, many you know, is Sergeant Damon Coats, who spent many years at the Sheriff's Office. And I guess the irony of this whole thing today and this recognition is, is actually tomorrow is the anniversary of the day when Damon was shot. Just to bring you back to that point in time, that he was shot by a 15-year-old when he responded to a domestic violence-type situation with somebody with some mental health issues. As many of you know, Damon worked as our Public Information Officer. He had a variety of roles from training. Actually had the great opportunity to work with him in narcotics. And I can just tell you that wherever we were able to go, working narcotics, Damon was always able to reach out and touch, whether it was somebody, a drug trafficker, and be successful, or successful in the Public Information Office or the training. He was just amazingly talented individual. Well, it's been 12 years since the shooting, and I can tell you, he's had some struggles along the way. He's had some setbacks. But the one thing that he's continually done is moved ahead and has been amazingly supported by his lovely wife. I wanted to tell you that one of the things back in 2007, we actually dedicated our marine boat, the name after Damon Coats. We also dedicated a bench at our north station, along with a planted other trees continually in remembrance of Damon's incredible work at the Sheriff's Office. And one of the things that touched me way back when, when he actually came back to the Sheriff's Office in 2007, that was really the first time back at the office since the shooting. And media at that time talked to him, and one of the couple comments that he made that really have stuck with me is, he said, "It's a dangerous job," he said of his service, "but at the same time, there's a lot of honor." He also went on to really say that, talking about his life, is that, "I've been pretty much, had incredible goals thus far. It's a miracle I'm even here today, just sitting in the sunshine, trying to remember those good times and letting go the bad times. That's success. I have enough faith in God, and then I know he's carried me this far for a reason, and he's going to carry me a lot further." So, I just an incredible individual, and want to say thank you so much for your service. It has never been forgotten, and it never will. And thank you, Board, for taking a moment to recognize Damon in this way.
Thank you, Sheriff Robertson. Thank you, Damon, for coming. Particularly with a great deal of admiration and respect, we see that your wife is there for you and supporting you, and we certainly do as well. You are an inspiration to us, specifically for your courage and valor when you were a police officer, but what you've gone through because of that service. You know, we're recognizing Police Appreciation Day. What's always interesting to me is, when people walk through an airport, it became a real rage that you would see somebody serving in the military, and you'd go up and say thank you to them. Yet how often do you see people doing that with police officers? They are the same line. We call it a thin blue line in police enforcement, but certainly it has to do with those serving in harm's way. Can you imagine leaving every day, or your loved one seeing you leave, and not so sure that you're going to show up at home alive? So, we really do appreciate the work that you did, and what our sheriff's personnel and law enforcement personnel do, because it's not a career, it's not a job, it's a calling. They do it well. Tomorrow, Friday, marks the official day, and how ironic, like the sheriff says, that it matches the day of the tragedy of your shooting. But, you know, there are some ways that people can recognize the importance of our law enforcement personnel. Now, we hear nationally, you know, how, you know, cops, you know, those demonstrations somehow that all police officers are bad. You know, there are mistakes made in this field, ladies and gentlemen, and that there is nobody perfect. But overall, especially in this county, we have an outstanding personnel of law enforcement, are very proud, again, of what the work they do. But share a story on Facebook or otherwise of a positive encounter that you've had with a police officer, how he's protected you, or how you particularly thought he or she did a great job in enforcement. Send a note or a card to your local sheriff's precinct, and/or the sheriff's department, or your police department in your particular town. And finally, tomorrow, it's a good time maybe to wear your blue outfit, and let people know that you are supporting the work that these people do, the fine work and dangerous work that they do out there for us. So, I would like to recognize Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, well, I'm going to kind of follow the sheriff's lead there. I just wanted to just, I don't know if Damon remembers, but years ago, when he was serving with the Sheriff's Office, he responded to one of my locations on McGoffin Boulevard, where he was held up by a guy with his, who actually brought his four-year-old daughter and robbed us. And Damon responded at the time, and was able to apprehend the person in about 20 minutes in a nearby apartment. But I, it's when I first met him, and I was so impressed with his professionalism and his service. I mean, he was a stellar deputy, did a great job, and I just admire that and remember the good service and work that he did to the community. So, I know we were all touched by this incident, and just great to see you again, Damon.
You know, if you don't mind, we take the time, why don't we have a little photo opportunity with Damon and his wife, and we can get you a nice copy of same. So, Commissioner, if you'll go down, we'll have a quick picture.
Let's invite all the sheriff's personnel and sheriff's department workers up here at the same time. Is everybody in a big photo group?
How many times have we told you to stand in front?
I know.
Yeah, I was going to say, Don.
Back to the matters at hand, and those are, it is time for a Citizens' Communication. What's that?
Presentation.
Oh, excuse me. I got a presentation. This is what I told you, Mary runs this place, I'm just a figurehead. All right, so, the presentation. We will now have the selection of Board of County Commissioners Vice Chair for 2015. I'll ask for a motion for the selection of Vice Chair for 2015.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Jim Bernard for Vice Chair.
All right, is there a second?
One second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion? One of the things that I told the Commission, I advised them I'd like to do during my tenure of four years, is to see every one of them serve as Vice Chair. At one particular time here, some months ago, some lady said, "You are the leader." And in fact, I am not. I'm only 20 percent of the vote, I preside over the meetings, but each person that's up here, believe me, is a leader, and they have great talents in that regard. So, it is nice to be able to lean on them as necessary, as I don't make it to a meeting, which has been pretty rare. But it does happen, and maybe it'll happen in the future. So, are we ready for the poll? Mary.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
I guess I'll abstain.
Oh, come on, you can vote for yourself.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes 5-0. You're allowed. It's okay. And now, unless Mary tells me otherwise, we are definitely going to Citizens' Communication, whereupon we will call forward Mr. Lespool, Mr. Stephen Bates.
Obviously, I'm from Clackamas County. You know, Damon Coats was the officer that we all knew by name, long before the incident, and I remember that day, and there's no words I have beyond that. Today, I would like to just chat briefly about voting. And when I was a little kid, there was a song about being old enough to kill, but not for voting, and it was about sending people to Vietnam at 18 years of age, but they couldn't vote. And, you know, there you are, you're whatever, a 12, 10-year-old kid, and when that changed, and they okayed the vote for 18-year-olds, it opened an opportunity for young people to get more involved. On the downside of it, it seems like most of our young people only vote in what we call the big election. And turnout isn't what it could be, in spite of the specious claims about how vote-by-mail is working. Voting is truly our responsibility, and voting doesn't mean reading a Facebook post, or listening to someone speak for 30 seconds in a soundbite about an issue, whether it's light rail, or the street fee, or whatever it may be. Voting means getting informed and understanding why you're voting, and how important it is, because in a way, you're voting on money. The people you elect, some are going to be more careful with money, some are not. So, you know, we just had an election. I imagine soon, we're going to see the street fee, or some kind of a road maintenance fee on the ballot. And there's a couple folks up here that I know wouldn't have dreamed of endorsing it or even discussing it unless there was going to be a vote. There's people in front of me that have worked real hard for us to get an opportunity to vote on major issues. Frankly, I'm offended when someone says we elect people to do everything without a vote. Obviously, sometimes the public maybe gets too caught up in wanting to vote on everything, but for the most part, we need to vote on major issues, especially when we're borrowing hundreds of millions of dollars. They just filed a petition, or they're working on a petition for a countywide vote for rail in Washington County, and of course, it's based on the model that we instilled here in 2012. So, with the opportunity to weigh in and vote on issues, it makes a dramatic difference on the outcome. The last example I'd like to share is the Gladstone Library. It was a $10 million, poorly financed concept initially, and the city got a little ripped apart over that. And in the end, the citizens took matters in their hands, the citizens got it on the ballot through an initiative process, and now we've reached a compromise. Now, we're looking at a whole new location, a $6.5 million project, instead of a $10 million fiasco. I can assure everyone in this room that when government, regardless of where it is or who it is, is promoting a project that's going to cost us a lot of money and involve a lot of borrowing, when they know we're going to vote on it, they're more careful with their pencil. And hopefully, as the street maintenance issue moves forward, the county will study the ridiculous fiasco that's gone on in Portland. And by the way, now it looks like there finally will be a vote on that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Bates.
Chair Ludlow. Commissioners, Happy New Year from the people in Boring. I'm Steve Bates. I'm sitting before you as the chair, or the chief petitioner, for the petition for withdrawal from the Metropolitan Service District on behalf of the community of Boring. Earlier today, I presented to your clerk to the board a certified copy of the 75-page document that will be presented to the Metro Council today. It will be, the petition will be presented or delivered to the Metro Council today, and the next Thursday, I will be testifying in front of the Metro Council. But the reason for this petition is half of Boring is within the jurisdictional boundaries of Metro, and half of Boring is not. The people of Boring, over the past two years, have been doing research, having meetings, discussions, trying to figure out how to solve this problem, because in the future, this will be a problem. In the event of incorporation, the people of Boring will actually have two different communities. Two different comprehensive plans will have to be prepared. One that meets the Metro Code for the people who are in the Metro boundaries, and another comprehensive plan that does not include the Metro Code for the people who are outside of the Metro boundaries. Therefore, we started circulating a petition after a vote was taken a year ago, January the 7th, 2014. Eighty percent of the people voted in favor of a withdrawal petition. Over 20 volunteers circulated the petition, and we are turning in a petition today that bears 697 signatures, which represents 30 percent of the registered voters in the withdrawal area. This petition was signed by Democrats, it was signed by Republicans, independents, and non-affiliates. This demonstrates the fact that this is a bipartisan measure. This is a community that wants to look to their future and plan for their future. We have established the fact that this is not a motion of a few, but the cause of many. This petition is submitted to right or wrong, and create a sense of unity in the Boring community for now and for the future. In addition, House Bill 2640 has been introduced at the state legislature. This was sponsored by Bill Kenner, and currently, we have several legislators that have said that they support it. We are, I'm in front of you today, asking for your complete support of House Bill 2640, which basically changes the boundaries of Metro, and relieves Boring from the Metro boundaries, and it basically takes us out of the reach of Metro. Therefore, I ask that you help us with the passage of House Bill 2640, and next Thursday, if any of you could, please come and testify with me in front of the Metro Council to ask for them to support House Bill 2640. Thank you very much.
I'm just guessing here, but I would guess that Lespool supports this effort. Am I right, Les?
We have 639 allies there that signed that petition. By the way, that's a vote, and we're looking forward to it.
Commissioner Smith?
A couple things. Mr. Chair, I'd request that we discuss this issue at a policy session or under issues, wherever you think is appropriate. Because obviously, we're going to be asked by the legislature what the county commissioners think, since we've been requested on that, and we can have a good discussion on that. Steve, I have a question to you. Why do you want to be outside of Metro?
Essentially, the problem that we see in the future is, half of us are in and half of us are out.
And so, what burden does that bring to you in Boring?
It brings us a situation where there is unfair treatment. Some of the people are treated differently than others. Even Clackamas County came to a Boring CPO meeting and said that they have to treat people within the Metro boundaries differently than the people who are outside of the Metro boundaries. In other words, part of Boring is being treated differently, just because of a boundary.
Yeah, and are you referring to things like land use laws, and sidelining businesses, and private property rights? So, if we could have some of those issues brought to our attention, because some of us may not know intimately the issue like you do, so if we could have those in front of us, and I'm sure that's going to go to your testimony too in Salem. Thank you.
Commissioner Schrader?
So, I almost said Commissioner Kenner, because as you know, I worked with him in that capacity as well. So, he has sponsored the bill, and the bill is going to be dropped. Are there any other additional legislators?
The bill is dropped.
It is dropped already, so it's...
We have a House Bill number.
Yeah, that's what I mean, because what we have in front of us is the LC draft, so...
Yes, as I understand it, the House Clerk has not released any of the bills yet for publication. That's why I gave you the LC, because that's the only thing I have. But I showed you the receipt and the House Bill number.
Are there any other legislators who are going to sign on at this point, do you know?
At this point, I have commitments from Mark Johnson, Representative, Representative Mark Johnson, Senators Thompson and Olson, Shamia Fagan, I've met with her, at this point in time, she's non-committal, she wants to do some due diligence before she makes up her mind.
And I guess I see the issue with this, in, part of it in and part of it out, that assuming Boring moves towards incorporating, which is, which I think might be part of the issue, it would, it would complicate the matter of what your comprehensive plan would be for a city, because part of the city would be outside of Metro's jurisdiction, whereas part of it would be under the umbrella of Metro. And being under the umbrella of Metro has a whole other layer of, you know...
Regulations.
...good, bad, or indifferent. It has a whole other layer of requirements, including densities and that kind of thing. So, that's what the complication is. And your preference, should you move forward with incorporation, which I personally think is a good idea, would give you a little more leeway from your perspective and autonomy in managing, coming up with a comprehensive plan. I mean, you'd still have to work with LCDC and...
And I actually, yeah, if I may, Chair Ludlow. I actually took the position that we would rather be under LCDC's jurisdiction than being half in and half out. We want to be able to establish ourselves as a rural community, just like Sandy and Estacada. They operate under the LCDC rules. They do not have to answer to Metro.
Yeah, there, those outlying areas are out of, outside the jurisdiction, that's true.
Commissioner Savis?
So, I was curious, I'm looking forward to reviewing the 75-page document. I've got a voracious appetite for information, as some people know. Do you know if the line is, the line where the boundary is, is consistent with the MPA?
I do not know that. I know that the line is, exists today, is the old DEQ boundary.
Okay.
Interesting.
Yeah, you know, considering, I mean, we've talked about this for years, and I think it's totally appropriate, and I personally will support it. I don't care about 75 pages, you can't have a town, an area, split in half like this. You know, and some people talk about under the umbrella of Metro, and I think it's more like under the hammer, you know?
I just use a, I just use a softer terminology, that's all.
Well, and some would say, I don't agree with Metro. I agree they should haul garbage, I agree they should take care of our zoo, it's just the planning thing that bothers me a lot. And maybe, you know, my suggestion would be to change where it says Boring, and just put Clackamas County for me, you know? But as Tudy suggested, we will take this under advisement. You know, very often, we don't take positions until we see the paper, the final paper, so to speak. And I think you were here on another matter where I reminded you that, you know, till we see the paper, we either will or won't take a position on something, and if we will, who knows what we'll do. But to me, this has great legitimacy, you can't have a town like that, an area that's been existing for a long time, be split in half like this. So, I will be supporting that, and we will take this up with PGA, Public Government Affairs, and talk about its merits, and I look forward to supporting it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And last, and certainly never least, it would be Mr. MacWoods.
Thank you, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners. I am Mac Arthur Woods, live out in the county, in the area where one of the Commissioners live. It's good to see she made it in through all that fog too, like myself. But I want to take this morning to say thank you big time for all the folks that hardly ever get any recognition. I'm referring to the folks that does the internet project, the cameras. This word gets out to the public big time, and it leaves no room for hearsay. It's coming from what is said right here in this office, and things that are voted for by the different ones, right here in this office. And it's becoming almost a problem for me, because people come up to me in the store, and they say, "MacWoods." I don't even know him, I never saw him before. They want to compliment some of the things that they see and hear about. And I say, "Well, thank you for the compliment, but that's so long ago, I forgot about it." Going clear back to when I got gavelled down, it's still on the internet. You can, I've sent out the address for the folks that's doing this great job, and we all should take our hats off to them for the good job they're doing. Give them a pay raise, maybe. Thanks, Tudy, yes ma'am, she understands. But it does bog me down when I go to the store. All these people want to talk to you, and it's going to get better, let me tell you. The word is getting out, not only in Clackamas County that you represent, but people are tuning into it. Yeah, Multnomah County, Marion County, all over, and we love it. And they certainly understand, as someone just mentioned this morning, I was in, went in the Navy before, I was old enough to vote, and don't need to elaborate on that. But above all, for the job that they're doing, and boy, some of these things is a test of my memory. I don't know how one of the Commissioners did it, coming in through this fog this morning, but it's a test of my memory, her memory's better than mine, to remember where all those chug holes are, to be able to drive around them, so you don't knock your car out of alignment. So, it's a challenge. But the heavy fog, I seen it once this bad before. I saw across the road in front of me, about six foot off the highway, a salmon swam through in the fog. It's pretty thick. It's a little humor, you've got to have a little humor. We having fun, Mr. Chair Ludlow?
We're not used to that from you, Mac, but go ahead, we like it a lot.
You've got to have a little fun. I'm having more fun, and it's going to get better, because I know something that a lot of other people don't know, until later. But for Mr. Roberts, Craig Roberts, I, my hats off to all of them. Remember back when they were cutting their expenses, while they were putting their life on the line for us, out in the public? Public got together and was able to get that changed around. They put their life on the line for us, we need to support the sheriff, his team, and all the officers. One just got shot again yesterday on the news in Salem, I heard about that. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mac. Just for the record, so for those out there who have never met MacWoods, and he quits showing up, he won't be accosted in the grocery store, for goodness sakes. But, you know, for those who don't know this, I... But, you know, for those who don't know this, I never have gavelled Mac Woods down.
No, no, you're previous.
So you mentioned gavelled down, and man, it wasn't me, right?
John, I'm sorry, don't take, it was a previous Commission.
Thank you.
There's also a previous Commission who were cutting their money, the Clackamas County Sheriff's.
I just want to catch up with her. Thank you.
It's okay with me.
All right, Mac.
Anyway, about the fog, yeah, it was freezing fog at my house this morning.
Was it?
Yes. Had a layer of ice over my car, and almost slipped down the stairs, so I creeped in this morning. But thank you for that reminder, Mr. Woods.
I didn't mean to gavel you down, but I had to catch up with my predecessor, you know? All right, that is the end of Citizens' Communication. We now have a public reading, a public hearing. Mr. Crowe?
Yes, we do, and this public hearing involves the second reading of an ordinance that would modify the moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries in Clackamas County. And I'm going to invite Mr. Dan Chandler to give a report. On this.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're here for second reading of Ordinance 01-2015, an ordinance which would partially lift the moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries, which was imposed by the Commission in April of last year. The Commission held first reading and a public hearing on December 11th, 2014. At that hearing, we heard from the Commissioners, there were two issues that were of concern. The first was a limit on the hours of operation, and the second was the potential for a prohibition against smoking on the premises. We've gone ahead and amended the ordinance to include those two changes. Hours of operation proposed to be 10 to 8, and there will be a prohibition against smoking on the premises, which would all, which would include employees, who are the only ones allowed to smoke today if they have medical marijuana cards. We did hear in the interim from the operators of some of the dispensaries that they would prefer that the hours be 10 to 9. The rationale for that was that many of their customers work in retail facilities or other places where they don't get off work, and many of them come between the hours of 8.
What did we have before?
We have, we have 10 to 8 in the current draft. There were, there were no hours at the first reading. We proposed 10 to 8 in the draft in front of you. One option would be 10 to 9. That was the request of some of the dispensary operators. We would, however, have the option of coming back and amending those ord, those hours when we go ahead and adopt the permanent time, place, and manner ordinance, which is in process right now. We've met with the work group already this week.
Commissioner Smith?
So how does this delay, or if it does, what we're doing today with the passage, with this second reading of this? Because we wanted to get it done so these people could continue with the operation of their business.
There, there would be no delay. If the Commission passes this ordinance today, it would be effective upon signature.
Okay, and then when we do time, place, and manner, we can address the 9:00 PM issue?
Correct. We could either do it now, or we could do it...
Well, if we do it now, will it delay it?
No.
Oh, okay.
I think we have to take into consideration, too, what's coming down the pike in regards to what little control we might have on the time, place, and manner for recreational marijuana. Should be probably some meshing of times there. Commissioner Bernard?
That was my question.
Yeah. All right, proceed, or is that it for today?
That concludes my staff report.
All right. So, okay, Commissioner Bernard?
Okay, so I, I'm interested in changing the time before we adopt it, so I mean...
Why don't we go through the testimony, if you don't mind?
Okay.
We have public testimony, and I'm sure there's going to be some repetitiousness about, about that particular suggestion. So I will open the public hearing, and I do have some blue cards here, and we'll put up Mario Mamone, I know I get that wrong every time, I apologize, and Abigail Wells.
Hello, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners. Good morning. My name's Abigail Wells, and I'm here, I'm the Vibrant Future Coalition Coordinator, and I'm also here representing Oregon City Together, and in particular Elizabeth Russell, who could not be here today. She's been working together with the Citizen Advisory Council, and just had a few things that she wanted to make sure were represented here today. So the first was just how much she and the prevention community in general really appreciate the Commissioners, how they responded to the community's request for the Advisory Council. And that has given all of us a really good opportunity to build proactive relationships in order to protect our youth as we move forward with this. We are in uncharted territory, and the more discussion and due diligence that we're able to give upfront, the better. So that was one important thing, is just to thank everyone for the participation. She also wanted to confirm that the place requirements now include substance abuse treatment centers, public parks, libraries, daycare centers, preschools, and pediatric clinics.
Let's have Mr. Chandler, can you verify that?
All of those issues will be addressed when the county does the permanent time, place, and manner ordinance. So what this ordinance does is lifts the moratorium as to those facilities who obtain their licenses from the OHA before the Board imposed the moratorium. I would note that the discussions that we have had with the advisory group have included setbacks from all of those facilities, but this ordinance doesn't address those issues.
Are you aware of the particular ones that she mentioned, of the proximity of those four locations to any of those facilities? Or is the person testifying, Abigail, are you aware of, of a, of a encroachment upon that distance?
I'm, I'm not aware of it.
All right. Commissioner Bernard?
Oh, I, you know, because we're only looking at the four who have already invested in the business, I'm comfortable with moving forward, but I, I think that in the next, when we talk about our ability in the future, I totally support those restrictions, daycare centers, specifically in schools. And frankly, I'd like to extend the distance. And I, we've, I don't know what we've come up with, what that advisory group is looking at, but 1,000 feet probably isn't sufficient, in my opinion, to a lot of these, but 1,500 might be more adequate. It also limits substantially the number of facilities that could exist in certain areas, which I think is important to sustaining the investments that people have already made in their businesses. But I was listening today on the radio about, I think it was one of the states, about selling buds or something. I'm not that familiar with the process, but selling buds in medical facilities versus recreational facilities. So there's a lot to figure out, and we'll be working with the legislature to make sure that some of our concerns that the committee has addressed will be part of the legislation that moves forward.
Abigail, you still have time remaining, should you want to continue.
Right, I will use that time. We also wanted just to mention that the Medical Marijuana Task Force is developing a marijuana retailer best practices, and we would hope that the county would strongly encourage retailers to adopt this. It includes things like parental advisories, suggestions of having consumer lock boxes on the present, on the premises, having resources and referrals for substance abuse treatment in some of these medical facilities, as well as eventually recreational, and education and reducing the access to youth. So that is something that's being developed, and we would strongly encourage them to at least look at and look over. And then another thing was just, again, the hours of operation. She said 10 to 8 seemed like a very reasonable compromise. Yeah, so that's, that's the majority of the things I have here.
So you will, and the advisory group will continue their communication with Mr. Chandler on the suggestions. We want to make sure that they, they get to us, but the best way is through Mr. Chandler for this subject, agreed?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir, you're next.
Good morning, Chair Ludlow. Good morning, Chair Ludlow, excuse me, and Commissioners. I want to just take this opportunity to thank you for all the thoughtful work that you've put into this process. It's been a long nine months, but in the end, I think it's been a productive work session. I think it's opened up doors of communications and doors of understanding that were closed. And I appreciate that the staff time that you put into this project. I've appreciated working with Mr. Chandler and Mr. McAllister, and they're just awesome people, very open and warm and welcoming, and so I really appreciate that. And Commissioner Bernard, I really appreciate your spearheading this and taking the time to really move forward in understanding the issue. And Commissioner Smith, even with your reluctance, and Commissioner Savas and your reluctance, I really appreciate your support of this issue. And I look forward to working with you through this until whatever end it may be. And thank you very much. And if I might add, Abigail, I appreciate working with Elizabeth and with your group, and I think, again, we've opened up new doors of communication and understanding, and that we can move forward with this. Thank you very much.
Well, Mario, they say that attitude is not nothing, it's everything. And your demeanor throughout this has been much appreciated by me, and I'm sure by the rest of the Commission, because we had some rather interesting moments when we were considering this, and I appreciate that now we're on a different and level playing field and talking to each other, so I appreciate you coming here today. Thank you both. And last, and I'll again use that vernacular, not least, is Mr. Les Poole.
Thanks again for the opportunity to speak. I'll be brief. I do know how to do that. 11 months ago, or a year ago, when this issue was before you, I challenged the county to take the lead and, and not wait until the one-year moratorium ended. And, and, you know, don't wait to see what other counties do. Just get involved. Let's, let's get an answer for these folks. I've got a friend that, that gets treatment with marijuana. I recall the lady that came in and testified, she had said, has some pretty credible evidence that the use of the oil, she's not smoking it to get high, but the use of the oil has been a great health benefit. Marijuana is an organic substance. I'm not a doctor, I'm not here to get into the details, but it does appear that, that there is a place for it, a time, place, and manner. And I just want to thank the staff and the county for doing what you're doing, so that there's some finality, and, and that you're doing this and not waiting until after July when the so-called recreational marijuana becomes legal. So thanks for everything you're doing, and hopefully this will move forward. I do want to just mention to the public, you're probably all aware, that the OLCC, which may become the Oil C and M Commission, Oregon Liquor and Marijuana Commission, will be putting out some statewide rules, and I'm sure they're going to reflect what you're doing. So thank you again.
Commissioner Smith?
Regarding the OLCC, you can go online and, and answer questions on their survey. They are actively seeking and very want, very much want people in the communities all around Oregon to comment on what they think should be allowed with recreational marijuana. I think that's really, really important. This is a really wonderful time to exercise your freedom of speech and your opinions on a very controversial topic, so I would encourage you to do that. Thank you, Mary.
Hey, that was my line. I set this up, and then this is what happens.
I'm sorry.
Yes, you have an opportunity, albeit a very short one, as you can see by this, till January 12th, to opine about various things in regards to the implementation of recreational marijuana, and the use of same. There also will be a, growing across the state to hear from community members, parents, law enforcement, people who want to grow or sell, and local governments. So please go online at marijuana.oregon.gov and take that brief survey.
That was a very good idea you had, Mr. Chair.
Sometimes I stumble on myself. Commissioner Bernard, thank you.
Oh, I just want to make sure that, that we're clear on, people are clear about my feelings on marijuana. I don't, I did not vote for legalization of marijuana, and, and I wouldn't. I'm in the public safety arena. There's a lot of things we don't know yet. However, I do support the opportunity for people to use medical marijuana. My big concern is McLaughlin Boulevard. Driving that my entire life, I'm concerned about how many marijuana places will exist. And frankly, I'm tired of depending on syntax to support everything we do, gambling, alcohol, cigarettes, and next marijuana. And you hear about states that are, have legalized marijuana, the millions of dollars that have come into the state. I'm very concerned about our dependence on syntax. I think it's a responsibility of, of citizens in this country to find a better way. I, I was actually appalled when liquor stores opened on Sundays. I don't know why, but I, I, I just, I'm very concerned about, you know, the abuse. In marijuana, yet, they, you know, I think Oregon's doing a better job, thanks to the mistakes that other states have made on how we're going to regulate and how we're going to dispense dollars for rehabilitation and protect our families. But I'm, I'm, I'd also like to today, and maybe that needs a form of a motion, change the hours from 10 to...
Yeah, I was going to, well, first of all, let's do this. A close of public hearing. And if you'll note, the first thing to do is entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
I move we read the ordinance number 01-2015 by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 5-0. Now, if you'll bear with me, I think we should probably make the motion and then amend it with any changes that the Commissioners would like.
I need to read it by title.
I'm getting to that, but I just wanted to get them, yeah. So I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this is ordinance number 01-2015, and ordinance amending chapter 6.12, Medical Marijuana Facility Moratorium of the Clackamas County Code and declaring an emergency.
All right, I'll ask for a motion.
So I'm a little confused. Don't we need to make the modification before we make the final motion?
Well, you want to amend the motion, so you can make the motion.
Yeah.
Well, I could make the motion amending it, and then we...
After the motion's made.
Nate and I have had that conversation before about what comes first, chicken or the egg. Mr. Madcor?
I don't know if it matters.
You have read it by title only. If you want changes to it, such as 8 to 9, that could be made now, and you could move that it be made, move that it be adopted as modified, or you could move and make an amendment to that motion as well. So it is a chicken or the egg type of thing.
I was just trying to be efficient here.
Well, either way is okay. Commissioner Smith?
You guys get tired of me saying this, but in the legislature, there are very specific rules on how to do this, as Martha knows. First, you amend it, you pass the amendments to the bill. That's a separate vote. I'm not saying that you don't know what you're doing, but you're very good with this. And then you read the entire bill, and you pass it as amended and using those words. Just thought I'd let you folks know.
And that was my intention. Actually, we can do it that way, if that's the preference. And then, after that's passed, somebody can still amend it after that. That's just the way things are. So if, Mr. Commissioner Bernard, you would like to make a motion to alter this, please do so.
I move we amend the hours to 10 to 9:00 PM, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
I'll second that. Is it second, second, okay. Commissioner Bernard with the motion, Commissioner Savas with the second. Further discussion on that amendment?
I have a question?
Certainly.
And that is, what is the OLCC's hours regarding to liquor stores?
We look at that, Commissioner, and they vary from store to store around, around the state. I believe...
And they have to be approved by the OLCC. So understand that an owner submits those hours and days that they wish to operate, it must be approved by OLCC, but go ahead.
Yeah, they vary from store to store. Some are open as late as 8, some 8:30, some 7:30. It varies around the, around the state, but generally from 10:00 or 11:00 in the morning till anywhere between 7:30 and 9:00 in the evening.
The facilities who sell the products, I believe you can sell alcohol at a bar or restaurant from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM. So that's 15 hours.
We're not going to do that here.
No.
All right, so there's been a motion, there's been a second. Further discussion on altering the hours to 10 to 9, instead of what we currently have, that's 10 to 8. Are we ready for the poll? Mary?
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 5-0. And now, when you make the motion, I might also add, as amended, so looking for a motion.
Jim?
I move, we adopt ordinance number 01-2015, modifying the moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries in Clackamas County, as amended and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion. All right, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 5-0. You want me to run out and sign that right away now, and get things going here?
So I have a question, Chair.
Yes, yes, Commissioner Savis.
So I was listening intently to Commissioner Bernard's motion, and it differs with what the language is on the sheet.
That was a typo.
Oh, it was a typo?
I just didn't get down that far to scribble yours out.
She scribbled it out. So as you heard it, is how it is. As amended, I might add, as Commissioner Bernard said. So that does pass 5 to 0. And now, the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, a board order for approval of mental health directors designated to authorize a custody hold under ORS 426233, approval of an intergovernmental subrecipient agreement, amendment number one, with the city of Lake Oswego, Lake Oswego Adult Community Center, to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a five-year Clackamas County Transportation Capital Improvement Program. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. And a resolution appointing a justice of the peace pro tempore for the Clackamas County Justice of the Peace District. And under Technology Services, approval of an ORMAP intergovernmental agreement, contract number 3150, with Oregon Department of Revenue for digital GIS tax lot conversion. And that concludes the consent agenda. And I also wanted to remind folks that they can read our packets and get all kinds of information on our website.
That's a good one. Yeah, that's much easier to navigate now.
Yes.
All right, I'll ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right, motion made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 5-0. And now, the county administrator has not been able to give us an update for some time. And I know the viewing public out there has missed that greatly. So you can tell us what you did over the holidays, Mr. Crup.
It's been a long drought, I know. So, but what I do have, I was going to follow up on how we started the meeting with acknowledging our county sheriff's office, and recognizing National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day by simply sharing with you a number of key accomplishments of our Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. And what I wanted to share with you is that they invested volunteer time and effort for the Deployed Veterans Drive Campaign, where volunteers packaged some 83 boxes of donated items for deployed members of the Guard and the Reserve. During the holidays, our sheriff's office enhanced their bike patrol to provide extra safety and security at the Clackamas Town Center. Also, during the holidays, members of the CCSO staff participated in the annual Shop with a Cop event, and that's where they work with young children in helping them shop with gift carts at local shopping centers. In October, the office launched the 12th National Family Violence Apprehension Detail, which includes participation from some 220 sheriff's offices nationwide. Then also this fall, the office hosted the Annual Search and Rescue Conference that provides critical training to volunteers, police officers, emergency responders, and medical personnel. And notably this last year, the sheriff's office gained Oregon accreditation, recognizing the high standard of professionalism of the agency. And then, finally, of course, as you know, as we were entering into the holidays, the staff participated in the No Shave November contest and raised some $6,000 to raise awareness on men's health issues and to support the American Cancer Society. So I just wanted to make sure that we sort of finished the day acknowledging these many accomplishments on the part of the sheriff's office. I have one other item to share with you, though, too. And that is just to let you know that during the holiday recess, I did sign two contracts. One was a contract between the Clackamas County Service District Number One and Paul Brothers Incorporated to conduct the Kellogg Creek Water Pollution Control Plant Landscaping Project in the Milwaukee area. That was a contract of about $195,000. And then, I also approved a contract with Managing for Results. It's a software contract, and this is to be able to put on the web the dashboard that will be showing to the public as to how we're making progress on our strategic plan. So that contract was put together, executed for a multi-year period. It's a total cost of $164,000 for the total contract. Looking forward to getting that effort up and running on the web. And of course, later on this month, commissioners will be hearing a report from county staff and departments about how well we're doing in meeting our goals in our strategic plan. That's my report.
Thank you. We all noted that you didn't participate in the beard grow during that 30-day period, Mr. Crup.
You know, I didn't. And there's a genuine reason for that.
Mama says no?
No, the reason is, is my beard is white. It's completely gray. So the last time I grew a beard, my wife, and this, it's been that way for quite some time. My wife said to me, "Don't ever do that again."
There you go, I told you. That will certainly do it. It is time for communications from the commissioners, and I'll start with Commissioner Schrader.
Well, it's Happy New Year, everyone, and it's good to be back, starting a fresh new year with my colleagues. And we all had the opportunity to see Commissioner Bernard and Commissioner Savis sworn in again on the 5th. And I'm really looking forward this year, frankly, working as a team. I think we all enjoy each other's company. We have this thing about U of O and the ducks thing going on, which, which I promise, the next public photo I will send with my dogs, they will be dressed as ducks for everyone to see. So we can call the Oregonian and let them have that photograph.
Will all their digits be in alignment?
Yes, they will.
Oh, you guys, go ahead.
We also had an opportunity, all of us, to go to the Oregon Business Plan Leadership Meeting this past week. And I was pleasantly surprised, as I think my colleagues were, that there was a lot of emphasis on our rural economy. And as many people know, we do have a large rural economy in this county. And in particular, Commissioner Smith and I have an interest in managing our timber resource as well, so we can actually get income from that. So I'm looking forward in the year 2015 to be working on those issues. And one of the publications that they had at that meeting was Oregon's Agricultural Progress. So I would recommend anybody who's interested in rural economies and agriculture, this is put out by the Oregon State University Extension Service, and it has just absolutely great information. Other than that, my personal goals of the year is to work with Commissioner Bernard on renewing our veterans' covenant, working with our ag investment plan to get timber management, working for business expansion and development, trying to get our ag investment plan not only on the state, but in the national limelight, as a way to reinvigorate rural economies. Working with public-private partners, because we're going to have this huge discussion this year on an urban growth boundary expansion. And those always get kind of controversial and contentious, but I think that we will work that through. And hopefully, this commission will be having a significant number of work sessions on that particular issue. I'm committed to reconnecting with our cities and their leadership to continue to work for the prosperity of our citizens, as well as our CPOs, community planning organizations, and hamlets and villages. I also continue to work for workforce, and that is training for displaced workers, for our youth, and working with our businesses to find out what they need to get people skilled up to have good family wage jobs by serving on our workforce board. And also, I do believe that arts and culture and heritage is a big issue here in our community. And I will put libraries under that umbrella, too. So I know that we have a lot of active people with Willamette Falls and the history, and the vitality, and the tourism of this county. So that'll be another goal to work with. And finally, my personal goal is to see the new year with a new, healthy, happy, new baby granddaughter. Because as many of you know, it got a little bit complicated there for a while, and I did have to visit my daughter while she was in the hospital and take care of her toddler. And so far, so good. It looks like things are going to go well. And I can't wait to show my commission colleagues picture of the new baby in March. So, there we go.
New chunky monkeyette, huh?
Chunky monkey.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Well, as Commissioner Schrader mentioned, myself and Commissioner Bernard got sworn in on Monday, and looking forward to a productive four years moving forward. I want to thank my colleagues for work earlier in 2014 on establishing the board goals. That's really been, for me, something that has not only set a vision in place, but hopefully, a lot, the machinery, if you will, moving in the direction of those board goals. And it's my hope that we can, with a lot of teamwork, both on the board level and at the staff level, work in alignment with what those goals are, as we're accomplishing those goals. At the Association of Oregon Counties Annual Conference in November, I moved forward a resolution to basically ask the governor, the governor's office, to reinstate the Oregon State benchmarks. That's really, really the same thing. It's how do you accomplish your goals and the metrics of measuring those goals. And as we roll out our strategic plan, which will take about a couple of years to develop, three perhaps, those are all part, those are the components of a strategic plan. But we, you know, we have to, as the board, have to make sure that what we do, what we say, and how we do what we do accomplishes those goals. And I think that's the most crucial part. So why we all agree about what we want to have happen, I think our difficulty has been on how we get it done, or the how. And so I look forward to that, and I will be kind of persistent, as I've, you know, or nagging, as I kind of stated at my swearing-in, on making sure we actually get there.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a wonderful holidays with family. We took, I took two weeks off, and turned off my emails and the news. And I came back energized, and it does work. And I'm thankful for that opportunity to be able to spend some time at the beach with friends and family, and enjoy our holidays with family. And today, I have more relatives flying in from Costa Rica to celebrate the holidays, and a sister-in-law flying in from Boston. So I get to do it again.
Boy.
And cook more. And so...
Because it's more brittle.
Yeah, more brittle. Yeah, well, thank you. I look forward to the new year. You know, this board has been working on a lot of projects. And oftentimes, we don't get an opportunity to talk about them because they're in the making. But things are happening in Clackamas County, and you're going to see that. The Willamette Falls lock situation, we're going to head up a task force on that. And I look forward to working with a lot of our stakeholders and partners and citizens in the county and elsewhere who want to see the locks reopened. And that's a priority for me. Also, the Blue Heron Mill Project at Willamette Falls, the developer signed an agreement to allow for the development of public access to the falls. And that'll be the first time in the history of Oregon that has ever happened. That is a big, big deal. Metro, say what you will about them, is going to take on that project and try to find funding for it. So at least that's one good thing we can do with Metro. And several months ago, they passed a new tax for parks. So maybe some of that tax that you're paying on will go locally to help the park in, at the falls. We did have a swearing-in, not only with my two fellow commissioners, but with our county treasurer, Sherri Anderson, and our county clerk, Sherri Hall. It was a very nice presentation. Judge, presiding Judge Herndon did the swearing-in, if that's what you want to call it. And that was really nice. It was well-attended by many people and friends from the county and families. And I just look forward to moving this county ahead with our goals and our strategic plan. We were very deliberate and serious about that plan, and we have staff working on it diligently. They've really stepped up to the plate and have been very receptive. And I appreciate the attitudes and the willingness of our employees to do that.
Thank you. And now, our senior commissioner, Mr. Commissioner Bernard?
Again, we were sworn in, whatever day that was. And, you know, the thing I'm looking forward to is, after six years, this is the best budget we've had that I've been able to work on. I look forward to, you know, looking at various programs that we invest in, and enhancing those investments. I also hope that we can put a couple million towards roads. With the price of oil down, there will be no better opportunity. So we'll be talking about those during the budget process. You know, one statement that was made today is that we cut the sheriff. We've never cut the sheriff. In the six years I've been here, we've never cut the sheriff. We've always been very supportive of the sheriff. So I look forward, again, like I said, one of my greatest priorities is public safety. So we can plan on doing that. So yesterday, I attended a safety culture meeting, which is hosted by Safe Communities Program, and an opportunity to look at the Pharaoh Unit, which is an accident reconstruction unit that they set on the corner, what used to take four hours, takes, you know, 45 minutes. And it does a 3D image, and puts photos on them, and they can reconstruct an accident. It's a fairly expensive unit, but it saves many hours of traffic jams. And they use it mostly on, you know, accidents where someone is killed or injured. And they are talking about all the various other things that can, it could be used for. For example, in the room, in, let's say there's a murder or something, they can just set it down, and it'll scan the whole area and take pictures. And oftentimes, when you have a crime scene, you might just go in and take a look, and you might miss something. But this unit, they can actually study everything. It did put more hair on me when it scanned me. I'm going to also attend the OFA Fair Conference. That's the Oregon Fair Association Conference tomorrow and part of Saturday, as well as in the morning, I'm going to a public safety conference in Portland. The Business Leadership Conference, I tell you, I just, I cheered and whistled when I-205 was mentioned. It was thrilling to go from nothing to actually a legislator specifically identifying I-205. So that was really, really exciting. And finally, Damon Coats, you know, public safety has been a priority for me. And perhaps the reason it's a priority is that, you know, once you're elected, things change, the way you see things. You know, when you're not, you worry about your parents and your family and friends. But when you're elected, one of my biggest fears, and continues to be my biggest fear after 12 years in politics, is that one of your officers will be killed. Or a board member, or a citizen. And that's, you know, something that really concerns me. And that's why I've always thought that support of our public safety personnel is, it should be a priority. always thought that support of our public safety personnel is, it should be a priority and has been a priority for all of us. So I look forward to another four years working with the citizens of Clackamas County, and I really look forward to how we're gonna deal with the marijuana, legalization of marijuana. And like I said, I, I didn't vote for it, but the citizens did, so I'll be working hard to make sure that we protect or support the decision of the citizens, but I'm also gonna try and work really hard to make sure that we do it the best we can. Thank you.
Yes, I think we've mentioned all of our preferences here before. I, I did not vote for it either, but it is the law of the land, and, and my biggest concern always has been how that affects juveniles. I was watching a show the other day, and it had to do with Colorado and the net effect of selling marijuana there, that the bordering states, all of them that border Colorado, have now seen a great uptick in marijuana citations arrests problems. So that's interesting as it comes down. Like Jim said, you know, we've got a lot of figuring out here yet to do based on that. Yes, the Monday swearing in, and we had, we, Tuesday, normally we have study and, and work sessions, policy sessions, but we all went to the Oregon Business Plan and Leadership Summit. It was a veritable who's who of anybody in Oregon. There are certainly legislators there, people from Metro, and like Jim said, it was quite a thrill to see Representative John Davis, because, you know, we've been on this, this isn't just this commission. The previous commissions also have said two oh five is a problem, and it's, as Jim has, Bernard has always said, it's a regional statewide problem, it's not Clackamas County's problem. And now, regardless of what individual counselors from Metro may think, and one of them wrote a letter about my comment about two oh five here a week ago, that it is nice to see it come to the forefront and really be showcased as the, one of the regional problems in this area. Something very wonderful happened over the holiday weekend, which Mr. Krupp, you know, didn't necessarily look for commissioners, nor did he need them to accept the following. ODOT contacted the county and said, and, and you know, we've all known that the sunrise, phase one, goes to one hundred and twenty-second, and it was only gonna be one lane in each direction. Now, anybody with correct thinking was thinking, let's see, from two oh five into a heavy industrial area, or from the expressway, in a heavy industrial area, you're gonna see a long line, a stretch of trucks. So ODOT contacted the county while we were all on recess and said, you know, would you like to have two lanes in each direction? Well, Don quickly took care of that business. Yeah, well, I'm not sure. No, he said, yeah, we'll take that. That's, that's incredible. So it, it is very advantageous for this county that, once it came down the pike as to how much money was going to be there for this, that there was still enough to do the Tolbert Overpass, and now two lanes in, in each direction on the sunrise to one hundred and twenty-second. An incredible gift to the county in a lot of ways. So kudos to ODOT and kudos to our management staff who is working on that sunrise, phase one. I might also notice that it is now official, the five million dollars which the governor and legislature dangled in front of Oregon City, Metro, and us, to put towards the Blue Heron Oregon City Project is now officially going to be given over to them, because Metro, and it was quite surprising, regardless of what people think, Metro is very good in a lot of ways on some thing, but on this particular one, to, to be able to get a free easement to that much property, valuable property, on the Willamette River was really a coup, and its value far exceeds, in my opinion, that five million dollars that was needed in a matching way to match the five million dollars that the governor is willing to give. So that money is coming forward. We will be back lobbying this spring in, in Washington, D.C., as we did last year for this Blue Heron Project, and considering that we now have made a huge step forward, I anticipate that the EPA and others, as we've been told, may be very interested in helping out to really revitalize this particular area and make it a job producer and a magnet for tourism here in Oregon. So that's about what I have, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate you being here today, and just a reminder again that tomorrow, if you can wear blue, say something nice about a cop, or even like I say, it is great to, and I often do this with veterans, anybody who's, you know, been in the military, let alone wearing the uniform out there, is to thank them for their service. Try that tomorrow, and in fact, for the coming week, to, to go out of your way to talk to a cop. They're very approachable and certainly appreciate, I'm sure, any positive comments you might give them. Ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before the Clackamas County Commission this day, this meeting is adjourned.